Welcome everyone to the work session for the Board Trustees Alabama Community College System. We use a more relaxed format for this and we appreciate everyone's presence here and your interest in the items on the work session agenda. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize a distinguished group that we have this day, the Alabama Community College Leadership Academy. I think we have about twenty or so attending in that respect. Would you please stand and let us recognize you? Those are the people. Thank you all for being here. We'll begin with our agenda. The first item under Academic and Student Affairs is a request for an Associate Applied Sciences Certificate in Medical Assistant Technology Program at Southern Union State Community College. Good morning.
Good morning. I have with me Dean Rhonda Davis, who is our Dean of Health Sciences, and Dean Linda North. She's our Dean of Academics, but she's also a former Dean of Health Sciences. So they're both experts. I'm just going to present the preliminary and they don't have the details of the program. But I want to first tell you a little bit how this got started. Mr. Jeff Lynn that works here at the System Office had come down a couple of times and had some meetings with some people in Valley, Alabama, which is our site that's close to the Georgia line. And as Mr. Lynn met with them, they talked some about the needs. He met with K-12 and a lot of our personnel were also in the meeting. And they talked to K-12. They also talked to Economic Development Personnel there. And then I had a meeting with some of the names and myself with the Economic Developers later. And they started talking about the needs. And then Dr. Jim Purcell, who is the new Director of the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, came down and he knew me from the past because we were both researchers. So he had been in Sayer with me and he talked to me about how he was going to speed up his process if the need was there to speed up the process on certain programs. So he called me a couple of times. He called me once and he came to look at Opelika campus. Then he called me again and said, "I want to go to your Valley site." I said, "Okay, come on down." So we went up there. Dean North and I took him up there and we talked that day and a meeting toured our campus there. And he looked at what was there and our nursing program at Southern Union used to be there. The ladies were telling me that it moved to Opelika in 2001. So we still had a couple of labs on campus that Dean Davis has used for our mobility program. And she's also used it for non-credit for CNA and for some EMS classes and just as a spillover basically. So we had left those medical labs there and when Dr. Purcell toured those rooms, he said, "What are you using these for?" And we told him that we use them frequently. He said, "I think you need to start a credit program here. Those are nice labs and you use them continuously and not just as a spillover or occasionally." So we got busy. I asked him how quickly he was talking when he said he was going to speed up the APE process. And he said, "Well, my next meeting is next Friday." And if you can have it to me by then, I'll have to have the full proposal. You know, the department usually requires us to do what's called an ISBA, an Intent to Submit Program, where we pull the research and we make sure that, you know, there's the need there. And we present that first to the ACCS office and then we go and write a full proposal. But since the Director of APE said, you know, "If you can have us something by next Friday," we started looking at options and we immediately started researching the need. And the need is there. I was amazed at the need. Now, there's seven other colleges in the system that has medical assistant technology, but the need is still great all across the state. And it's, Mr. Jeff Lynn was here, was on campus even yesterday and he gave me an occupational snapshot page. And I started looking down through there. And you have to know what to look for because I've learned a lot about medical assisting and medical is not my background. Math is. But I've looked and there's a lot of titles on those pages of need. In fact, nursing assistance is in the top ten fastest growing jobs in our region right now, Workforce Region Five. So Dean Davis scrutinized that data thoroughly last night and she said there's six of the different titles that's in this program. Since you've already looked at the program, you know there's embedded certifications. I feel like we did a really good job of embedding certificates in it. People that finish this program can come out with seven certifications. When we talked to Dr. Purcell, he mentioned patient care technician because that's what the high school calls their programs. I wanted to go beyond that because you don't want to put out, basically that's a CNA. And you want to put out something with a little more, students that have a little bit more skills and knowledge than that. So these ladies, being the health science experts that they are, and Dr. Lisa Schaber, who's our Director of Nursing, sat down and did a curriculum while some of the rest of us pulled the research and put that part in the proposal and the need. So I'm going to let Dean Davis and Dr. Linda North talk to you a little bit more about the details of the program. Good morning. We are really excited about this program and I think when we started building it, if you want to call it that, I was actually at the Iowa Conference when they called and told me that we were going to write this proposal and for a new program. And I said, "Okay, well, let's do it." So we did, even though it was a short turnaround to do this, we put a lot of thought and effort into this program. And with our students nowadays, especially with our adult learners, a lot of times things happen after one semester or maybe two semesters. We were at exit points. I hate it when I have so many students that go through a program and get to fourth or fifth semester and then something happens and they can't complete their program. And they're left with not a degree. And then a lot of times they may not have a certificate in anything. We have to be better stewards. So when we were looking at this, we tried to take our resources, what we have like right now at Southern Union. And we did that with any of our programs, but we really wanted to look and see. And that was one thing with Dr. North with her business courses and all. We wanted to see, how can we make this match up and to get this program started off? And you can see it's not a lot of cost for a program really compared to some of our health science programs. I know the college always tells me I'm the one that spends a lot of their money because of our expensive equipment, things in health sciences. But when you look at this, we did design it over four semesters and to try to shorten it up a little bit. And we tried to use the academic courses that we already have in-house rather than specific MAT prefix courses. Now, there's a lot of the courses you have to have that are in that particular area. But we were really trying to take the best of the academic world and the technical world and make a matchup. Because we do want these students to have options should they not be able to complete the medical assistant degree, the associate science degree. We want them to have something because we want them to go to work. That's the bottom line, I think, of a lot of our programs. Sometimes we sort of forget that along the way unfortunately. But we are really excited. We do have, I think there are several different certifications now. Some of these are not, you don't see very often. But the main thing, we want our students to be, they can actually get a phlebotomy certificate, which is the same thing. CBCC also has medical assisting. Their program is five semesters and they do offer the phlebotomy option. But we also put in there the EKG technician. Because a lot of times people, these ICUs don't need monitor checks. And then we have some other, we also have a route for students to take. Let's say they get into this first or second semester and they decide maybe actual patient care is not really what they want to do. But they would excel maybe at working at the front desk in doctor's offices. Or even, you know, as more in the secretary or administrative role. So that's why we have a little bit different pathways here. One thing we do want to encourage in this program are soft skills. And I pulled, just in the LaRaines, Georgia area, within 25 mile radius, and there were like almost thirty jobs posted here with these different titles. And one of the things I thought was very interesting, because a lot of them, the applications, they put the soft skills part before they put the actual technical skills that are desired. And one of them says, "Ability to apply common sense understanding to carry out instructions furnished in written, oral, or diagram form." I thought, "That is a neat thing to see on a job posting, to have common sense." So these are just, I mean, it was just surprising. Now, a lot of them are different titles and that's why we wanted this to be a very diverse program. Do you have any questions? And Dr. North can help with the academics and the courses.
You mentioned the, this, the document states that the program requires 235-hour preceptorship. What does that involve?
They actually go and do clinicals in these different settings. Just like our other health science programs, they have to go do actual clinical time, what we call clinical when you go. And you're practicing in that area. And we have open doors ready for these students to come into to do these practice hours.
So you have agreements in place with these students?
Oh, yes, certainly.
Do they have agreements on our students as well or what does that?
Well, when you're doing clinicals for any health science, that's usually their opportunity to look at your students. And then a lot of times, especially in our last semester of our health science program, they'll say, "Well, I really like that" and they'll may go ahead and offer them jobs, you know, in that last semester. We can't have a written agreement because we can't, you can't have anything saying that the student's going to get hired or paid, anything like that when they're in a program.
That's my first thought.
Well, we did, we did send out forty surveys. And we, we're doing this on such a quick timeframe. We only gave two days to do the surveys then. And we sent them out north, northeast of our Valley so that we might get them close to CNA. And that program is a very good program that we've looked at several times. I located one for sure, the medical assistant program there. So we have a great program. We surveyed forty physicians. And I know the form letter, some of them, but to get physicians, it takes time, within two days, for us to get nineteen back out of forty. I thought that shows that they're probably going to hire our students as long as they, their place has been informed, the students.
And your package may have fifteen letters, but we actually got more in after we'd already sent everything into Trisha.
I know you can't put anything in there about guaranteed employment, but is there anything that we could look at going forward? This is on all the processes of a hiring preference. Students come through this and get priority hiring?
I don't know that I've seen that in an agreement, but what I've seen through the years of working with that is the reputation just of the students. That they do, you know, they do prefer to hire our graduates. And with your 235-hour preceptorship, that gives them a prime opportunity to see what the skills of that person is, as well as the things that really sometimes matter to them more than being able to draw a blood sample exactly correctly, as coming to work on time and what kind of attitude do they have and how do they interact with patients in that area. But certainly we can work toward, you know, they are on our advisory committee. They have input to give us so that in case some of our graduates are not up to what they need, we can make changes in those programs.
Chancellor, if you or Jeff would share what body, the language that was in the agreement that Bishop put the logistics program where they would have some type hiring preference in that program? I'm hoping I remember right.
We'll look and see.
We were looking at our placement rates though in our career tech programs with Jeff yesterday. We didn't look at long as, I know, hers are fair to the root. Hers are hundred percent anyway. Because hers actually come on campus and have their own career fair. For the career tech, we plan career fairs for these people. They come and pick what they ask us and we set up a date. And then she has to give them the money that they can come to get her students. So it's a little bit different, you know. You don't really have to, you know, they're willing. That's why they were so willing to sign these letters so quickly.
The demand is definitely there. Yeah, our hospital can have receptors in it. I mean, we love getting them on board and, you know, the demand is so high that we try to retain those. I love the medical reimbursement specialist. That is, that is so key to hospitals and physician offices and that you just can't find.
It has a lot of different skills in there and a lot of certifications. And if that person has all seven of those, they're going to really be a sought-after person to be hired in the areas that are there.
We had, in the proposal, that we had over four hundred students last year in all of our health science programs that did not get into the program. So we've got a pool of four hundred sitting out there that's probably already, a lot of their academics is in this program. If it's approved by you next month, if it's approved by Alabama Commission on Higher Education, and if it's approved by SACS in December, then we can immediately send the letters to those four hundred and let that be our recruiting effort. Because of the short turnaround if we start to do it, we'll need to recruit those four hundred and get them in. Because I know it's, as long as they get in healthcare, they know they have a good chance of possibly, if they want ever, they're going to be the ones that get hired.
Are your certificates stackable towards the Applied Sciences or?
Yes, they are.
So it's not just from who doesn't finish and then goes and gets a certificate. They're requiring these stackable certificates along the way?
Right. And one of the things that we've seen with students, particularly in this day and time, is they like to come and do two or three semesters, go away for a semester. It's almost like a co-op program. And what this will allow them to do is be able to do that, but also not go back to work at a minimum wage job, but to actually have a skill to build upon so that when they do finish and get the medical assisting certification, that person will have not only those certifications, but experience in the workforce springboard.
You mentioned soft skills and I assume you will incorporate those in the program as well because that is a big deal. I know it sounds funny.
In all the labs that they teach, the soft skills are a big part of that. But then also it's a critical or an asterisk skill on their clinical evaluation tool. When the students go out into the precepted areas, there are things in there like comes to work on time, you know, professional behavior, different things like that, whatever the term you use, but it really comes down to soft skills. And if there's a problem with that, then that student would be counseled. And unfortunately, we've had some students in the past, just like you do with employees, that don't make that cut. And they just choose not to do what they need to do to be successful, but hopefully not with these.
Is there an opportunity for some of the agencies to support us with equipment? I know the mannequins and stuff what we would have to purchase. But when I look at some of the diagnostic systems and x-ray tables, you know, I know it's pennies probably in the big picture, but you know, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, you know, it's a big savings to the overall health program.
When you approve this program, we will have an advisory committee meeting and get those employers in. And certainly with the response that we've had, we've always had a great relationship with everybody. And whatever they can give us to help us, they generally done in the past. So we just haven't asked that formally.
We're kind of waiting for permission.
Yes.
But we, I mean, our laparoscopic equipment in our OR, our first tech program was done maybe by East Alabama Medical Center, Lanier, so several years ago. So we, we don't mind asking, but we want to make, we have the program list first.
Thank you so much for allowing us to present this proposal.
Item two, occupational slides for Bishop State Community College.
Morning.
Good morning.
I may, before I start, I'd like to introduce someone I have with me this morning. Austin Fields Stain, some of the things that we have been able to accomplish in Mobile concerning workforce development, man, he's been a team member. And I just want to introduce Austin. He's been a big part of what we've been able to do. And also, he's a graduate of the Alabama Community College System. He's a graduate of Waters-Hansfield. And while he was there, recognized as a Phi Theta Chi cap of Coca-Cola, New Century Scholar. So I just want to give you all an opportunity to meet Austin. I think on the, one item that has been deleted is, is truck driving that has been deleted. Okay, all right. So I'll start with Sims. Sims is located in West Mobile. And we're not getting many students from Sims. The mayor there asked me if I would consider offering general education courses there. Students there presently, they are, they're going to Mississippi Coast Medical College in Goshay. Some are going to South. And it's an easier drive for them to drive over to coastal, coast Alabama. So that's why the mayor there asked me if I would consider offering general education courses there. The rental agreement that I'm asking for approval will start in January through May. Currently, we are already serving one hundred students in a enrollment program at Mary G. Montgomery in Sims. The cost to rent the facility is fifty-three dollars an hour. The number of hours that we will be using the facility will be twelve. That's Monday through Thursday from six to nine. So the cost of the facility for a semester, which is fifteen weeks, will be nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Our goal, our goal is forty-eight students. So if we have forty-eight students taking just one three-hour course, that would generate twenty-one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. Also, to ensure that we're not going to lose money, in order for a class to make, we must have twelve students. And if we do not have twelve students, that class will not make. I'll be, wouldn't have to entertain any questions if you have concerning Sims before I move on to the field door site.
Is there anything in the agreement to get out of in case we don't make the flights?
Right, it's a one-year agreement. So we're going to give it a try the spring semester and then in next fall, then we can get out of it. And you know, we do this. I'm hoping that it does, that it does make, that we're successful, but if not, we'll pull out. It's a fantastic facility. It's a facility where they have firefighting training. They have everything that's needed in that facility. And the rent includes, it includes utilities. And plus, they will have a staff member there during the time that we are there.
President Sykes, let's see, you said twelve hours per week?
That's correct.
Okay, twenty was what was on our data. So that's changed.
Monday through Thursday.
In the initial, are you going to do a calendar one-year lease or is it just so many months upfront? What technically, what's the initial agreement?
The initial agreement would be for the spring and in next fall.
So it wouldn't be a full calendar year, does it?
Do you have questions?
Do you have students already interested or interested or pretty?
Right. I have not started the recruitment effort because I want to quickly win to that little group. But we have already received phone calls because there's a possibility that Bishop will be able to offer us their Sims. So I think we're going to get forty-eight students. And the reason that we offer English, math, psychology, and history, these courses will transfer to South because they, you know, they can end up transferring to South. And the other thing with Gen Ed courses, this is where you generate your revenue. You know, you don't generate a lot of revenue with your technical program, but this is where you generate your revenue. So I feel pretty good about offering the Gen Ed courses in Sims. The only difference with Field Door, they're not charging us rent. And we will have to purchase a few tables and chairs, install Wi-Fi and a monitor. And that's all we have to do with Sims. They're not charging us rent at Sims. I mean, not Sims, but Field Door at all. The Field Door site is an agreement, a partnership with the Mobile County Commission.
Can you go to the side?
Utilities. Utilities. And utilities.
President Sykes, I affirm what you're doing here and I think it's just, I think it's excellent. We've already had the proposal, yeah, we had a proposal site on the, I think, that doesn't written on it, that's not affirmed. So anyway, appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. Under Workforce, item three, allocation of fiscal year 2017, 2018, industry certification initiative signs.
Good morning. I'm Barry May. I'm the Executive Director of Workforce to Nellman here at ACCS. And I'm here to present to you the recommendations for, to fund through the industry certification initiative, the workforce grants that were submitted this past month for funding. We have gone through a rigorous process to look at this, to look at each of the grant proposals. In addition to the regional workforce council's recommendations on funding, we put together an independent group of industry experts in all of the different industry sectors. Healthcare, aviation, advanced manufacturing, construction and welding. I believe that's, that covers the, I'm sorry, healthcare. So they were tremendously valued. They had, we had fifty-four grant proposals totaling roughly eight point five million dollars. And so then they went through each of those proposals in their sector. And then we met with them to get their recommendations in terms of the quality of the proposal, the importance. And there's the criteria of how well it aligned with the region's workforce goals. How well it met high-wage, high-demand jobs. How sustainable the programs were after the funding was exhausted. So that criteria allowed us to rank each of the proposals and then make solid calls on what to be able to fund, even partially or in full. So what you have in front of you is recommendations to fund one point, one million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is for the industry certification initiative. Just because it's not on this list doesn't mean it's not going to be funded. We are looking at other, at the proposals, at funding, at other available workforce funds. There were many of the proposals that we're still searching for answers for. We did not have. We did not have conclusive, we didn't have clarity on the data that was provided. We did not have clarity on the objectives, performance measures, and so forth. And we will be working directly with the school to be able to get that information so we can make the decisions on funding in the future for the next round of funding. I'd like to open it up for any questions.
Oh, I'm Barry, Central Alabama. Unfortunately, this is a class that I taught. And to read this, turn mill rights into electricians is going to be a tough task because of the guidelines under MPA 7E, the art flag rules, clothing rules that you have to wear. Has all of this been taken into consideration?
We looked at it based on what was presented to us in terms of the proposal. The equipment that they had in the proposal looked very solid. The recommendation from the sector committee when they looked at it, they, a lot of the comments were, wow, I wish I had this in my region. I wish that my school had proposed this. There is a, everybody agreed on the committee that there's a huge plan for mill rights. Several of them were searching for higher mill rights for their particular companies that they were in. And so we felt like that because of that, because the information in the grant proposal seemed solid, that we should recommend funding that.
I have a grave concern on this one because it talks about going into power plants. For example, Alabama Power will not let anybody with an electrician into their power control center. Same way with a lot of industrial plants. They have the lock and key and no one but an electrician can go in there. So certification to get them qualified is going to be scary. I would ask Central to relook at that to make sure this is going to meet all the requirements for that. Because basically what you're doing is taking a mill right and placing it into an electrician. If they're going to be going in everything from 4160 to 480 down to 277, all the way down to 110. So it's a task, but it's doable. I want to make sure it's thought out.
Make sure that such a matter of experts are okay with it and industries will.
Any other questions?
Item four, the allocation of industry funds for career coach program.
This is amount of funds, so everyone of the colleges that had requested funds for career coach, we're recommending dividing the allocation for those and dividing, supplying those funds for the colleges. These funds are critical for these colleges, for the colleges that have career coaches. It supports those career coaches being able to provide guidance to not only students at the school, but also for students in the high schools.
Any questions on that?
Yes. My concern, and y'all have heard this before. What type of oversight and activity reports does the community college give to these career coaches? Unless something's changed, the career coach actually reports to a school superintendent, not the college. So how is that feedback for all the things in SEMS going on? Make sure we're getting what we need.
I know, right now, we are provided with performance data that is supplied. It is self-reported in the schools in regards to how many students served in the super office. But as far as the reporting aspect of that, that's left up to the college.
I'd like to talk to you all about some experience.
Sure.
If it's needed, I doubt that.
Any other questions on the career coach funding program? Item five, industry funds for existing industry training program.
So this year, we'd like to recommend the $300,000 for funding for industry initiatives. This allows the Chancellor of Discretion to award monies to companies in industry that are looking at, that have a quick need for training. This would be up to $15,000 at the Chancellor's discretion can be utilized. And then over that, we'll require more approval.
Any questions about the existing industry training program?
Thank you.
Item six, proposal of reduction force policy guidelines for Gaston State Community College. Good morning. This is Gaston State's request for approval of its revised reduction force policy guidelines. The proposed policy and guidelines are very similar to those that the board has approved on behalf of the state and Sheldon. The only difference is distinction. Gaston State's proposed policy includes a section on the definition of terms, which gives a little more clarity to the terms of art that are used in the policy. The other difference is the recall period under Ingram and Northwest Sheldon's policies. The recall period was two years under proposed policy. But that's the only difference of subjects. Any questions?
Does it possibly have a system policy or just amendments for the institutions?
I think that's being worked on presently. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Final item is a presentation of truck driving range construction project for Sheldon State Community College.
Good morning. Thank you Chair Thompson and members of the board. We are happy to present the truck driver training range construction project to the board. You may recall that this has come before you in the past. This is a project that has been in the works for a couple of years now. And we're excited now that we have the proper funding to move this forward. You guys probably have more experience with this than I, since I've been serving as interim president for five weeks. So this will not be an unfamiliar project to you. But when you look at the high-demand occupations in the state of Alabama, truck driver training is one of the top, it's one of the top five high-demand occupation areas in all seven regions. So we're excited to be able to offer this and to bring this project to you. This is a project that has been in the works for several years, as I mentioned. This is a collaborative effort with many, many different entities, including the Demopolis Industrial Development Board that donated the six acres in the industrial park for us to locate the project. The city of Demopolis that has committed $55,000 in cash to the project. Demopolis Water and Sewer Board is committed to running the water and sewer out to the project for this. Alabama Power is committed to setting the poles and running power out to the facility. The system office has committed funding for this project as well as multiple state grants in Sheldon State Community College. With me today, I have Jared Sheeter. He's a senior project manager with HPM representing the system office, as well as Adam Ingram with Walker and Associates that are going to make a presentation to give you more detailed information.
Yes, if I might, one thing Delta Regional Authority has kicked in.
Yes. I did not, but Delta Regional Authority, I think, has kicked in $155,000 toward the project. It's been a true collaborative effort with multiple partners with this. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Hurst. In front of you, you have a copy of the presentation. We've put together for you a brief overview of the project. As President Hurst mentioned, I'm Jared Sheeter. I'm with program management. We are working on behalf of the system and providing some support to the Sheldon State team in their efforts to rebid this project. Intent of the presentation is to add a little more color and detail to the work packet that you've already been provided. So as we go through the presentation, Adam Ingram is here representing Walker Associates. They are the engineer on the project. The project is primarily civil, so it's engineer-led. He's going to give a brief overview of the design and the scope of work. And then I will speak to the cost and the schedule as well. And then we'll open it up for questions at the end. So at this point, I will be.
Sure. Good morning. He said I'm Adam Ingram with Walker Associates in Tuscaloosa. Civil engineer on the project. I'm just going to briefly kind of walk you through what we have. This project is in industrial park south in Demopolis. And it's right next door to the existing waste management facility you see to the right. First thing that has to be done is the entrance drive into the site is a gravel drive. So the first thing that will have to be done is going to have about 500 feet of roadway improvements to go from a gravel drive to an asphalt paved roadway to get to the site. The reason that's going to be asphalt is that be typical of a city street to be asphalted just for maintenance and it can be extended in the future. You can see it sort of just stops roughly at the end there on the left. That could be extended in the future if needed. Like we already mentioned, the Demopolis Water and Sewer Ward is going to bring utilities to the site. The utilities in the right of way will be performed by them, not in the scope of this project. And then, once you get onsite, that lighter colored pavement you see there on the drawing is going to be heavy-duty concrete pavement. That's the way that the base bid is set up for this project, it'll be concrete. And then the little parking area there in front of the building is going to be asphalt. That parking lot is set up that it could be, you could double the number of spaces in the parking area relatively easily in the future if you needed to. The building itself is about 1,200 square feet. And we'll see that on the next slide, it's about 1,200 square feet. It's a modular building. It's set up for two classrooms and some restroom facilities. The truck driving range itself is the big portion of pavement that you see. What you see now is what is set up as the base bid. So there is provision as an alternate that that could be extended by a few thousand square feet. This that you're seeing now is about 77,000 square feet. A driving range, it's roughly 200 by 400. You can see just below the building there, I don't know if there's a point. That is an outline of a tractor trailer that's sitting, so you can kind of get an idea of the scale. And so this shape was something that we worked with the school. This is the shape that they needed to be able to have at the driving range. And of course, the remainder of the project would be utilities to the building, corrosion control, et cetera. This is just a blow-up of the building itself. This is a modular building. It's going to have, it'll be accessible, it'll have ramps, stairs, torches on both sides, restroom facilities, two classrooms. This is a modular building because of budget issues and also just to get the flexibility and have a really quick timeline. So as it is right now, this project is set up to have only two alternates. So what you saw on the previous slide would be the base bid. Alternate one would be extends around the perimeter. The reason that's an alternate, that'd be pretty easy to do after the fact if you needed to. And alternate two would be some additional pavement area if everything came in lower than we expected. That's pretty much a summary of the project as it's set up right now.
So as I said, we'll take a look at the cost component of the project before moving on to the schedule. As you can see here, this is a summary view of the estimated cost of the project. So our team has prepared a detailed estimate and that's what you see at the summary level here. So you see the various major components of the project represented, all of which total to the million 168 number you see at the bottom. I guess the main point to make here is this is representative of the turnkey scope of work in the base bid. So the plans would be to be able to award the project at that base bid and proceed with the scope of work that is needed to support the program that the school wants to deliver there. Typically, the estimates that we prepare usually in one to two percent. So unless we want to go item by item, we'll just move on to the next slide. So this is more the big picture now, the estimated project cost. So you see the top line there is the same million 161 for the base bid, scope of work that we just presented. There's also a soft cost component to the project, as you would expect. Those soft costs are summarized here as well. That's the design fees, certain reimbursables for the project. There's also FFNE component, furnishings and equipment component. Those total soft costs taken together, $154,000. In addition to the base bid, it's being 323 estimated cost of project at this point. So this is the timeline for bid and construction. So just to walk through this quickly for you. The design now is complete. It has been issued to ABC for their review. The contractor solicitation process and advertising process is underway at this point. So you see that represented as the second activity there on the slide. The drawings will begin to be issued to the contractors. We're already receiving responses from prospective contractors and drawings are being issued now. Of course, the request before you is to take bids. And right now, the planned date for receipt of bids is September 26. In advance of that, there'll be a mandatory pre-bid conference September 19. Both of those will be held. The pre-bid conference and bid opening will be held in Demopolis. The city of Demopolis is hosting us there for those two. So just a note on that. There's approximately a one-month period shown for execution of the contracts post-bid. So if everything goes as planned by the end of October, we'll have the contracts executed and a notice to proceed issued. So effectively, November 1, we proceed. It's anticipated three-month construction duration, in which case we'd be finished with work in the January. And then, of course, a 30-day hunch list and closeout period to achieve final completion. And that concludes the presentation. We'll take any other questions, of course. There's no pre-qualification.
Will the contract details be advised?
Yes.
Then you've done subsurface exploration and you understand you've got undercut. What do you think about the schedule with respect to starting in November? There seems to be a fair amount of undercut. Weather is gonna be a challenge, do you understand that? I guess that would.
Without doubt, yeah, that's a good point. As you well know, that's where majority of our risk, in fact, for this type of project is, is basically, all of our risk lies below the surface. There has been a geotechnical investigation that's done to identify that there are force holes on site, high of plastic, and there are a number, there's two methods, actually, that have been proposed. There's a lime stabilization method, which does require some undercut, and then introduction of lime, and then there's a second method where it's undercut to a depth of twenty-four inches, and that's what's actually moved and replaced, reconstructed field, so the contractor can choose between those two and all processes, they'll choose the most economical route. But weather certainly is a concern.
One more question on the, the amount of concrete paving, is it, is it a matter of economics of scale to choose to use concrete, or are you still concerned about the subgrade and pricing? I'm just curious, there's a lot of concrete.
And I'll, of course, I'll let Adam speak to this, as the engineer, correct me if I'm wrong. The intent in using concrete in the driving area is really for longevity. Asphalt is gonna be subject to, well, the area in general is gonna be subject to heavy turning, heavy truck traffic, so thought processes, that the use of concrete is gonna keep that area stable longer. So there is a little bit of a premium, of course, to use concrete as opposed to asphalt for this work, for additional expenses.
One thing I would add to that is that we know that asphalt is less expensive, concrete is more expensive, concrete is more desirable because of the use. There is some, there is some credit or more efficiency gained in the concrete in that the stone subbase has been eliminated with the concrete section, the thinking being that since you've got that two-foot envelope of a undercut and carefully prepared subgrade, the concrete pavement does rely on the stone for any string, that's typically just the working and workable area. And so we've eliminated the stones, are trying to make that price more competitive or more comparable to asphalt.
Yeah, so there has been a quote provided by C-Mex where they have committed to a rate for purchasing of the concrete. It's basically a discounted rate linked with the volume of concrete that's being purchased, and that is reflected in the estimated cost of the project. So it would be a typical ABC contract, so it'd be a month of progress payments, right? And there will be pretentious hell of five percent to fifty percent, the typical schedule for a whole.
Appreciate the homework and the detail, and listening to all these crazy questions.
Happy to do it.
Any other questions on the construction project? Thank you very much for the presentation. This is a question that I would like to share. I, I know the demand is high. Do we have projected numbers? We may have only been presented with our call office. That is last item on our agenda. Anything else from the board members for the work session, chancellor? There being none once, once again, Leadership Academy, thank you for being here, we appreciate what you're doing, we appreciate your presence, and thank you everyone else for being here. Upon adjournment, ask the board members to go straight to the board room, I think you got much prepared and ready to go on that. There being nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.